Everybody please, please rise.
I salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, not to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Arity?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Seven present.
All right, we have a special order of business, and that's the introduction of new administrators. So that's a pleasant task for Acting Superintendent, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor Samaras. I'm happy to introduce some of the members you may have met already, but I think it's appropriate that most of them are here this evening. So to my right, we're thrilled that, starting today, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations Billy Joe Turner is joining us from the Greater Lowell Vocational School. She comes to us with a wealth of experience, and I do have to tell you that she spent the weekend scouring over our budget even though she wasn't officially started. So we thank her for that. Also, Finance and Operations Assistant Business Manager for Transportation in interim position, John Dakota. John, I think all of you know, has supported us with our transportation in the past and additionally served in Worcester Public Schools in that role. Student Support Services, all of you have met Acting Assistant Superintendent to my right, Mary Payne, who comes to us from the District Support Student Support Office. And we're really pleased that she's stepped up and supporting me in this role. Additionally, the Laura Lee Therapeutic Day School, we're pleased to welcome back Frank Vincente, if you want to give a wave and take a stand, who served as interim coordinator, interim coordinator last year for the Laura Lee, and did a phenomenal job and was welcomed back this year. So we're happy to have Frank. Lincoln School, we're happy to inform you that we were able to secure Ginger Coleman, who comes to us from Western Mass, where she served as a turnaround principal in several schools there. And Ginger, thank you for joining us this evening. For the Maury School, the principal of the Maury School, we have offered the position, and she graciously accepted Kathleen McLaughlin. She has, Kate McLaughlin, has served as the, most recently, the Assistant Principal at the Rogers STEM Academy and done a phenomenal job. The Riley School Assistant Principal, Ronald Fusco, he joins us from Methuen, where he was the Dean of Discipline for the Tenney Elementary School. Oh, Ronald is not, not here, right? Okay, so this is, sorry, I've got the wrong one. I've got a few names, so bear with me. So then additionally, we have the Riley School we did, Robinson School Principal, Bridget Dowling. You were introduced to Bridget previously, but Bridget comes to us most recently from Somerville, where she served as a principal and assistant principal. Bridget, thank you for being here this evening. So the Robinson School Assistant Principal, let me get that right now, that's Carl Derubius, and Carl comes to us from Methuen, where he served at the Tenney Elementary School as a dean of discipline. Carl, thank you. Our Shaughnessy School, we're pleased to announce that Greg Pasery, who was the Assistant Principal at the Wang School, will be stepping up into that role at the Shaughnessy, and he was in the building today, working really hard, so thank you, Greg. We're happy to have you. As STEM Academy at the Rogers, Assistant Principal Roger Murneau, who served in the assistant role at the Robinson last year and moved over to serve the STEM Academy, and his science background will certainly support the school there. An additional Assistant Principal was hired in an interim position, Nancy Crohn's, who was a district support specialist in the Student Support Services office, and she'll be joining both Roger and Jason McCreeven at the Rogers. So we're really happy to introduce you. Could we have them all stand and give them a round of applause? We're grateful that you want to work with our children.
Actually, from any, from the group, would anybody like to say anything? Come up to the mic, you're welcome to. I'd like to put people in the spot a little bit. But actually, on behalf of Lowell School Committee, we want to welcome you to the city of Lowell. I think if you've come from another location, I'm sure you had a good and happy life at that, whatever school system you came from, but I believe when you work a little, a few more, a few months in the Lowell School System, you'll find this a very welcoming city. You'll find the students unbelievable. You'll find the parents, you know, really supporting education. Parents want a good education with their children. And I believe you'll find the school committee very supportive to your needs. It's not easy, it's not easy being in urban education, as you all know, but there isn't a better job, I think, in the country than being an urban school administrator or teacher, because you meet so many students from so many different lands, so many different needs, but they all look, they all want one thing. They want a good education. They want to be accepted, and they want a future. And that's what you're going to help us do, so we're very pleased to welcome you to Lowell School System. Does anybody from the school committee want to say anything regarding to welcoming? Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, we'll now look and approve the minutes of some of the previous meetings. 4.1, approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, July 18, 2018. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, July 25, 2018. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Lowell School Committee meeting of Tuesday, July 31, 2018. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, August 8, 2018. I need a motion to accept and place and file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Thank you. Next, we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent, what do we?
Yes, this is a number of items relative to the budget for the committee's consideration. If there is anything that anyone has any questions about, I can certainly address them.
Ms. Arity?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the superintendent. I was just wondering, these additions for the transportation with NRT and Pride Star, is that related to the information you told us at the last meeting that some of the, about the students in terms of busing, or was that a separate issue?
So the NRT permission to enter is relative to the four additional buses that we needed to have the staggered schedule at the Rogers School. So now that we have, you know, a separate elementary and a separate middle school, we needed to order those buses, and so we have to anticipate that number in our budget and account for that. And as far as the Pride Star transportation, the Pride Star transportation, this covered 22 buses for 43 days of summer school for this summer, and it's an additional cost that we're currently looking at the contract, because the contract is a February-to-February contract, and we're, Ms. Turner will be really reviewing that and spending some time making sure that we make the recommendations that we need going forward for that.
Mr. Nutter?
So just to clarify, on the STEM Academy, during the budget hearings, we knew that the STEM Academy was going to a split shift. That question was asked, because I asked it. So when they did, when the budget was prepared, they did not take into consideration the need for these buses at that time?
So this is not reflected in the current budget, correct?
Any further questions on this matter? I need a motion to approve, permission to enter. I, Mr. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Martin, thank you. Next, we have memorials. Sorry, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Arity?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Seven yeas, approved.
All right, next, we have memorial. Carol Ann Reddy, mother-in-law of Jeff Guazza, coordinator of mathematics for Lowell Public Schools, elected in the chambers. We're now going to go into motions. First motion is by School Committee President Gerald Nutter. Mayor convened a special meeting between School and City Council Finance Subcommittee with the superintendent and city manager the week of September 10 to finalize the Maintenance of Effort Agreement for the 2018-2019 school year and to discuss the need for the city of Lowell to properly fund, fully fund transportation per mass state laws and cease decrease in the city's total cash contribution it provides to the schools. I need a second by Ms. Arity. Mr. Nutter?
Thank you, Mayor. The Maintenance of Effort Agreement has been something that has been talked about for several years. I know the former superintendent was in negotiations at that time with then-city manager Murphy, and it was postponed and kind of put on hold under the new city manager until she got in. But, you know, if you look at our budget, we have $165 million budget. $150 million of that, $150,935,000, comes from Chapter 70, State Aid. And if you look at the past few years, the actual cash contribution from the city has been decreasing because the cost of transportation and adult education, which is actually supposed to be under the city, not the school committee, but yet the money that we received has to go to that. So if you looked at the budget that was presented to us this year, you will see that by the time we take out transportation and adult ed, when the city says they have given us $15,736,000, what it actually ends up is that they have given us $5,49,238, which does not give us what we need. And I know money is tight. I understand that. But we have a fiduciary responsibility to service our kids and to give them as much as we can for programming. State law, Chapter 71, is very clear that it is the responsibility of transportation to the city. The city used to get reimbursed from the state in a separate transportation program. That's why it was never addressed under the Ed Reform Act. Unfortunately, when the state hit a rough patch, they stopped reimbursing the cities. And as a result, that now has been put on to the school department, and I think unjustly. If you look at the city budget, the city says that they expect to receive $145,955,000 from taxes here in the city. And if you look at the $5 million that they're giving the city in actual cash contribution, that's only 4% of the taxes that come directly to the school department. The chargebacks are $20, $30 million, and we need to sit there and agree on what's being charged and to look at the way, I know DESI offers two choices. DESI offers a flat rate that we can charge, that the city can charge per student for the MIS purchasing, accounting, some of the other things that we get charged for. The trash pickup has gone skyrocketing to us. I understand snow and ice removal is always a moving target, but we need to agree, and because we need as a school committee to understand how much the city is going to be able to contribute. It clearly says that, you know, on the, on the finance page for DESI, you know, when school and municipal officials cannot agree on the correct reporting, the allocation, the documentation of expenditures, then we can notify the department, the Commissioner of Education shall then appoint somebody to come up and conduct an informal hearing and try to get us to work something out. I hope it does not come to that. But we need to address the Maintenance of Effort. In regards to transportation, adult education, the decrease in cash contributions, again, 4% of the total tax money that this city collects, only 4% in actual cash comes here because the rest of it goes to the increasing transportation costs. And so, I understand some of the city councillors wanted to weigh in with their opinions on the superintendent issue. I would rather they weigh in with the city manager on fully funding transportation and adult education. That's where they can be of assistance to us, not interfering with the personnel matter that is clearly by law under the purview of the school committee. So I hope we can have this meeting with the city, we met with them before we approved the budget. They seemed willing to meet with us and work with us, and we need to move forward with that. Thank you.
All right. You know, for the record, I understand where you're going, you're going with this. When you're talking about transportation, if you look at many communities, it's under the school committee budget, or it's under the city budget, but it's really the same money. But the thing is, it's something very difficult for people to understand. And I think what you're saying here, and I think what we need to do, is to ensure that we have really strong communication with the city council and the city manager to bring forth our concerns and see what can be negotiated. Now, I'm not sure if I can get to the September 10th, but it'll either be the week before or the week after. I bet it'll meet everybody's needs, but I think these are meetings that are timely and needed, and I think there is a willingness on the city council side to listen, and the city manager to listen. But the thing is, and there are so many, when you look at, you know, who should be paying or what should be paying, a lot of it is interpretation discussion. So rather than argue who's responsible, I think it's good that we, you know, you've suggested that we set up a meeting to have an open and honest discussion. What's the final product? The final product is, do we properly fund education?
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, that thing that's very concerning to me, and I've only been here seven months, so maybe I just have to get used to that's the way we do things, which I'm not a big fan of. But when I hear a city councillor or a city manager say, well, we gave the schools $15 million, well, it is not. We do not get $15 million in cash. In fact, this committee voted in January asking you to have the city manager break out transportation as a separate line item in the budget so it can be clearly seen, so that the residents of Lowell clearly see how much of actual cash we are receiving. And that wasn't done, and I would like that to be done going forward. I understand transportation is a huge cost. I also understand, probably more than other people, that the fiscal constraints that this city is actually in right now. And we are in probably one of the worst financial times that I've seen this city in. And people need to realize that. We are in desperate financial times.
But I think, I'll quote Pat Morgan sometimes. Pat Morgan would say, from the superintendent of schools, sometimes in the worst of times it becomes the best of times because it forces you to do what's necessary to make it work. So any other discussion on this? Mr. Hoey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to support the motion, and only for a few reasons. Maintenance of effort, to me, I mean, we should be giving all the credit to Solak Kafawi because he came after the city about that, and then we broke out and made a bunch of motions, and here we are today. But if you think you're going to sit down within a week or two and finalize the Maintenance of Effort Agreement with the city, I think you're fooling yourself. I really don't think it's going to happen. And I'd like to also say, when we speak about Maintenance of Effort, I think, nothing against Madam Superintendent, but I believe we need the two, two people that are going to fight to write a new agreement. I don't want something that, I think this is a chance for us to really clean up a lot in the schools. I believe if Superintendent Kafawi, which is not here right now, I think that we should maybe go in to executive session or something to talk about this, but I believe we do have someone here that could stand for him. Because I think it should be really our lawyer and against the city solicitor. This issue here is something bigger than most of us on the school committee, and I feel this motion, to me, is really a joke. I don't think it's going to happen. To sit down with the city side, I believe we'll just sign another Maintenance of Effort Agreement like we did a decade ago and move on. I think this superintendent, and this is the final word, the one we just had, is the one that came after indirect cost, Maintenance of Effort, and that's part of the reason why he's not here today. So with that said, I'm going to rest my case on this, but I won't support this motion. Thank you.
Well, the way I see this motion, this motion is not to come for a final answer, but it's just to continue discussion. I will always advocate discussion. If we shut ourselves off between the city council and the school committee, then let's pack it up and tell all of these people good luck. So I think we have to work together as best we can. I do not see this as a final answer. I see this as an approach. Yes, Mr. Hoey?
Last thing I have to say about it, I mean, I've never seen anybody, even like, I'm confused watching the union so supportive of this superintendent. And it's about And it's about net school spending. That's how we're supposed to sit here and advocate more money. I agree with the part about busing that Mr. Nutter is saying. But I'm just saying, I've watched what goes on here, and I think we need the right two people to sit down and bang out this agreement. And nothing, like I said, no disrespect to the new superintendent. I think she's going to do a fine job to lead us through all this tough time. But that's my opinion on this issue. That's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this matter? I think we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one nay, approved.
Requested a joint meeting of the Finance and Facility Subcommittee to review existing job descriptions for custodians and consider the need to privatize school building maintenance. Example, painting, minor plumbing, ceiling tile replacement, et cetera. And look at potential costs versus adequately maintaining these buildings for our students. I need a second on this motion. My Mr. Arti, Mr. Nutter?
Just let me be clear. This motion is in no way meant to be disrespectful to Mr. Underwood or our custodians. They are limited a lot by their contract, and so is the DPW and land and buildings personnel. And it is not their fault, on the city's side either, that they do not have the proper personnel or the funds to maintain these buildings. This city just spent a pretty good chunk of money to have the Collins Report done that was given to the school committee, not to the school committee, the city council. It is noted in there that the school custodian staffing is somewhat higher than industry standards for public schools. And it says that we should consider to revise relevant bargaining agreements and job descriptions to increase the amount of maintenance work that can be performed by school custodians. Well, I've talked to a lot of our custodians. I think we have many talented individuals who would gladly switch from the title of a custodian to that of a maintenance person and be allowed to replace a ceiling tile and fix a broken lock on a door and patch a hole and stop a leak. But they can't do it right now because of contractual obligations on the city and school committee's side. Another recommendation from the Collins Report was to determine which preventive maintenance work should be done in-house and what should be contracted. It also suggested that we hire an outside firm to develop a multi-year preventive maintenance program. You know, there's an old saying that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. If you look at the way this city has done maintenance in our schools, it's deplorable, to say the least. If we don't start looking at new and different ways to maintain our schools, then we're going to be in the same trouble we were in last year, having to cancel school in winters for no heat, in the summer because it's too hot. We cannot allow anyone to say, "Well, we've always done it this way." Well, you know what? We can no longer always do it that way. We have so many good, dedicated staff members who are custodians, who take pride in their building, and they would like to be able to do things. So this motion is just another way to start the discussion of things that have to change. And the city spent money on the Collins Report to start these changes, and we need to keep driving these changes forward. Thank you.
All right. Those in favor?
No. Can I speak on it before we vote on that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Again, I, I think the UTL, the custodians, the word privatized. I remember when Mr. Frisch was here, I remember having a conversation with him about privatizing all the custodians. And I had a hard time with that because I know out of the hundred we have, we might have ninety-nine, ninety-eight right now, I'm not sure. I know more than half doesn't, don't live in Lowell, and that's fine, too, because that's the way of the world right now. But I know a lot of custodians that are not only cleaning our school, they're, they're actually more security in our schools. They help because they're, they're watching their own people in the doors. Not saying all of them, but like Mr. Nutter said, we have a lot of real good ones. But we pay rent in this system. If I'm not mistaken, we pay between forty and fifty million dollars to rent our schools. And maintenance is not part of my job. I know it's good to get these people together and talk about it, but I think the report that he was referring to, that the new city manager come up with to me, is unbelievable. That was one of the best things I've seen in my lifetime. So again, I, I just, I'm not going to say that I'm against every motion here. There's some good things in that motion, but again, we're talking about maintenance. We shouldn't be. We should be talking about getting our grass cut before school opens and not do it on the last day of, of the summer. That's our job, to make our schools look beautiful. And for some reason, we're not even getting that done. I know what Mr. Underwood does. You people have heard me praise the man many times. But I like that word, privatized, but I think it's, it should be called outsourcing. Maybe we have to look at that. Maybe we have to look at the DPW in the parks and put them all in, under one umbrella. There's a lot of things we could say, but I think that's the city's side of issues. And I'm afraid we're maybe moving too fast and let the city manager do her job because I think she's doing a fine job right now, and it's going to take some time. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I've looked at the school budget a number of times. I don't see the line item for rent. Am I missing that? I am so tired of hearing that "we pay rent." We pay no rent in our schools. Let's make that clear. There is no money coming out of this budget for rent. We never pay rent. The city is allowed, under Massachusetts state law and the Educational Reform Act, to have chargebacks for different things. Just like we have chargebacks to a revolving food service account that's potentially put us a million dollars in the hole. So I don't want to hear about rent anymore. There is no rent paid by this school committee. Look at the budget.
He's right. They take it back in chargebacks. Maintenance of effort. Look at pension, if you want to start talking city issues, start looking at the size of pensions. There's a lot of issues we could discuss about this. Yeah, we don't pay rent, but chargebacks, it's the same thing, just different words. That's all it is. They charge us for things we shouldn't be charged for. And it's all about the maintenance of effort. And I appreciate all these motions coming up tonight because it's all about maintenance and effort. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The word privatized really kind of has a bad, I have a bad taste in my mouth on that one. If, if you could change that word to outsourcing, I could support that.
Sure. Not a problem. Outsourcing's fine. This, Andy, this is just to start a discussion, to look at things.
I understand.
But outsourcing is fine.
I think if you vote, if we vote in favor of the motion, it's not to privatize in any way. It's just a discussion. Yes, Mr. Arti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to comment. I don't think anyone would argue that our building maintenance has not been great, okay? And, and I, I'm not interested in pointing fingers or, or anything at this point, but my understanding of this motion is to have us come together, Finance and Facility, and start to look at what are some options that we could explore. And I think that, that is worth having that conversation.
I mean, this is something that could help you in negotiations. The one thing I can say, going to many school systems and actually having worked in some of the school systems, other school systems, they do have many, many of their custodians are allowed, we'll say, painting, ceiling replaced, tile replacement, very small jobs. It just keep, I mean, it's something that we should negotiate down the road. As was said previously, we have the people with the skills. We just got to make sure that we give them some of the tools to work with it. But this is a negotiable issue, and it, it's, what we're doing is talking about, how do you make it better? That's, I think that's okay. But we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one nay, approved.
All right. Next, next motion by Mr. Nutter also. Request superintendent mayor ask the city manager to fully staff each fire station located near schools to ensure our student safety until proper repairs have been made, especially in light of the Collins Center report to the city which states, "Given a nationwide concern about school safety at present time, it is unacceptable to have doors that do not lock properly and our emergency exit doors that do not open or otherwise non-functional." I need a second. My Mr. Arti, Mr. Nutter?
Thank you. You know, at the June meeting, I made a motion requesting the superintendent ask the city manager to do a comprehensive inspection of all the school buildings. Electrical, plumbing, sanitary, heating, cooling systems, water, fire safety. We were told at that meeting by the superintendent and by Mr. Underwood that their understanding was this Collins Report was being done, and we would have all that information from that report. I looked at that report. I don't see any specifics. It's a lot of generalities. One of the things, you know, on July twenty-fourth, I brought in another motion asking if we could look at all of the doors that need replacing and come back to us with a cost. And again, we haven't heard anything. If you look at that Collins Report, it, it's very specific. "In the summer of 2018, perform a comprehensive assessment of all interior and exterior schools and associated locking mechanisms. School dude records include a remarkable number of work order requests relating to doors and locking mechanisms. Some notable requests include fire door unlocked disabled, exterior door has been vandalized, corridor fire door partially or fully non-functional, exterior fire doors, three, four, and art room panic hardware in disrepair, fire doors do not open." This is unacceptable. On July twenty-fifth, as I said, I asked if we could get a report and get a cost, and nothing's been done. School's about to open in a couple of weeks. We have no reports, no additional information from the city. We have schools that, you know, we need to have all these, that, that we send kids almost on a daily basis from all over the city to the hospital. They get called to the school, the fire department responds, false alarms. Fire doors worry me. My, I have several relatives, including a brother, who were firefighters. Biggest fear of mine is the safety of our kids. And the report was crystal clear. So I would like to see if we could at least make sure that we have adequate coverage and staffing near our schools for safety for our students. Thank you.
Mr. Hoi?
I just, I think it's a beautiful motion if he could squeeze in there somewhere that we put a, a live policeman, a real policeman in front of every one of our schools with an AR-15. I want that. So that's what I'm saying. We all want something. You know, I think we should have a cop in front of every school. I've been saying it for years. Can we afford it? I don't think so. So we do have to sit down and talk. But I'd rather talk about having police around the high school and, and worrying about the fire stations right now. It's just priority. That's how I feel.
I mean, because the thing is, I represent both the city's side and the school's side. And there's a lot being done on the city's side, and we're, everybody's working at the best that they can. But I think what would be advisable here, and if you wish, I could ask that the fire chief come one day, and the chief, the new police chief come another day, to talk about what they are doing and how they see safety in the schools and what is happening. As example, the firehouses, are they fully manned properly that are near schools and things like that? But we have that pleasure actually in the city council. And there are many nights when, when these questions are raised that on the council floor, it's good information that councils receive because they can ask the questions directly. But if it's the wish of this school committee, I could start with Jeff Winwood to come in and talk about safety and his perception of what he sees going on at the schools, rather than say to the superintendent, you know, "We want another report from you," but the thing is, and also the chief of police to come in at some point on another day to talk about, you know, safety in schools and what's happening. Ms. Martin, hand your hand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do think that, that we've got a couple of different issues going on. And I think that your offer to have both the, the fire chief and the chief of police, I think that would be an exceptionally good way to start our school year. I think if at the, in our September meeting, if both those individuals could come to a school committee meeting, present on the state of the schools and the state of safety in the schools, that is a great kind of back-to-school information that we could get as a committee, more importantly, for our families and our students at home to be able to be aware of. The, the, the concern, and, and I certainly share it, especially in terms of the, the doors and, and all that. I haven't seen the Collins Report, so if we could get copies of that forward, that'd be great, just so I can take a look at it. But I do think that over the course of the summer is the time to address a lot of these, the, the door issues. They are, they happen very often, obviously. So again, having not seen the report, did it give a listing of which, of kind of a comprehensive list of which entrances and exits there were concerns around?
They talk, well, but they have that information.
Okay. So I mean, that should give us our starting point that...
The report and the information they have.
Okay. That, I, I guess I'd also say during that back-to-school report, perhaps we could get an update on how many, if there were a hundred issues...
Some things you may want, some things you may not.
There, there you go. Well, I'd always rather know than not know. So if we could get that information again in kind of a September timeframe of what's been corrected and what's still outstanding, then it allows us to kind of, you know, chart the, the progress towards getting all these things addressed.
When we talk about school safety, and, and one of the simple things is a door. Does the door lock in the building? I mean, if we don't have that, I mean, to talk about other things, why, why bother? You know, so we will take care of that. Everybody in favor of the motion? Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I, I just want to remind the committee also that we did have a very extensive safety audit conducted in June of 2016. And we had recommended to, to speak in executive session relative to that because when we're talking about the safety of our facilities, we want to ensure that our facilities are as safe as they possibly can be. And, and we also don't want to air some of the concerns publicly because we want to make sure that all of our children are safe. So I'm, I'm very willing and ready to share that because it does have very specific, detailed information. Although it's two years old, some of the same things that showed up in the other report are there. Very specific about each individual school, as well as the district as a whole.
Thank you for that. So all in favor of the motion? We have a registered speaker on seven-three and several others.
Hi, Laura Ortiz, 1234 Lawrence Street. So I just want to say I'm obviously in support of having the fire department station staffed fully. But I wanted to talk about school safety because we don't even have school nurses full-time at schools. There's a bunch of schools that don't have them. Maybe one day make for minutes. You know, you have 2,892 students with asthma, ninety-eight with seizure disorder, and thirty-four with diabetes. Their only staff person that can help is the school nurse. When it comes to anaphylaxis, kids that need Narcon, kids that need CPR, there's plenty of people trained in the school that can help them on field trips and on buses. There was only 433 504 plans that were allowed last year for the entire group of students, so it's just not enough. There, there's no safety plans in place. So when you open up this talk about safety, I'd like you to open it up to the rest of the categories. These kids, you know, you can't plan an asthma attack. You can't plan a diabetic attack or a seizure. And there's absolutely no reason, in the state of Massachusetts that requires a school nurse, that we do not staff nurses full-time at school. The students in the 504 category, we believe, are being held to a higher standard if they're not being given 504 plans. And, you know, it, it's been since 2013 that the denial of access to the emergency medication was brought up in this district. Now we actually have students that are not having access to the one person at school that can give them assistance and administration. I'm greatly concerned because to me, it just looks like discrimination. I think we're better than that, so I'm hoping that if you do open up any type of committee that you will talk about all the different areas of safety that need to be addressed, not just having a firefighter, because he's... need to be addressed, not just having a firefighter, because he shows up at the school, he can't give these kids these medications. The school nurse can. So, we can have a million firefighters staff next door. It's not going to help these kids. I'm not talking about a lockdown. Obviously, we need them. But I would greatly appreciate it if the school committee would finally look at the kids that are being neglected. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mrs. Ortiz. But if I'm not mistaken, or someone can correct me here, I believe that's another issue that the city owns, correct? Again, maybe it's maintenance of effort again because nurses fall into the city, not the school department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Next, we have a motion by Mr. Dakota and Mr. Nutter, request that the facility, school building, and transportation subcommittee meet to come up with a priority list of school repairs and improvements that are currently needed in our schools. Richard Underwood should be in attendance for this meeting. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It somewhat speaks for itself. I think it goes hand-in-hand with the next motion, that we sit down and come up with a priority list of things that we believe are necessary to improve our schools to a level where it's acceptable. And obviously, in reference, again, to things that happened last year, heat issues and all of the locking issues and so forth, I think all of those have to come under that, into that meeting before we go and have a combined meeting with the city council, facilities, subcommittee, to discuss these issues and to see where we can go with those. Otherwise, we're just going to keep coming up with lists with no game plan.
No, I think you have an appropriate time. Mr. Nutter, do you care? You're all set. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to say I wholeheartedly support this motion. And it actually reminds me, and I was looking at the reported motions, I had a motion in February 14th of this year, asking that each school come up with their top 10. And I think that that would also be something that could come before that joint committee, that we have as a starting point. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Underwood, he has a very good idea and handle of what priorities are across the district. But in my conversation with principals, sometimes it wasn't a huge fix, a broken window, or a handicap ramp that needed to have asphalt to put, so that it met the curb, you know, things that were not huge but would make a difference. You know, God forbid something was wrong and you couldn't get a child out of the building because the handicap ramp didn't have the right slope or whatever. So, that's why I'd like to go back to, and it looks like Madam Superintendent has something to add to that, that that meeting would be an opportunity for us to really look at what are our priority concerns and have feedback from each school as well as from, you know, other stakeholders on the school side before we go before the city, to figure out, some of it might not be really expensive stuff. It's just, but thank you.
Mr. Howie, then the superintendent. Mr. Howie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm pretty sure, Mayor, you were on the facility subcommittee with the city when we all met back with Kevin Murphy. And you remember the results of that? I don't have to bring them up right now. So, my concern would be if you get all these people together, I'm not sure how that will go. I think we've, the past school committee and this one here, I think we've put in plenty of motions about maintenance and maintenance of effort. And it's just, we have to relax a little bit and let this city manager do her job and find the money to do all these things. I think it's a good motion. I really do. But to me, maintenance should be whoever's spending the money, which is the city side, to go around and pick the priorities. I'd like to look at the Shaughnessy School and tell you, they haven't had AC in a long time. Even a system that works, their fire escapes are broke. There's mold around the skylights. I mean, we could hit every school. I think we've already done that. I think your subcommittee last year with us, with Steve Gendron, Bob Gignac, myself, I think that's where that, I think that's where it comes up that we were paying rent to be here, just in case you might want to go back and look at that. But right after that meeting, I remember manager Murphy leaving real mad, and then Ms. Doherty come out with a motion that set the whole place in the right direction. So, I think we've done all this work. Not that I don't want to be in a subcommittee, but the less times I have to report for a subcommittee, the better I feel. I haven't had one on the high school. I don't think anybody has had one on the high school. And this is going to be my second term. I don't even know if we had, yeah, we had one about the athletic department. But there's a lot of issues that we don't. Now, it's all facility, 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 or finance. And I think we sometimes, it's like overkill.
I think you're correct. The one thing I don't want to see is subcommittees get out of control where we're sending the superintendent every night to a subcommittee meeting. We have to be judicious about the use of subcommittees, no question. But I recall when you're talking about, I don't want a subcommittee meeting for the sake of having a meeting and nothing being done about it. So, I think what we're going to try to do, and what my office is going to try to do, is ensure that what information you get from the city side is worthwhile and that we're both listening. That's what we have to set up. Madam Superintendent, you...
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to both of the comments by school committee men Dakota and Ms. Doherty, relative to, there were lists created. I've gone to schools over the past couple of days. I'm going to hit every one of them before Friday. But what I'm hearing from our leaders is that they did provide the top 10. So, that will be Ms. Turner's first task, is to pull together those with Mr. Underwood. And we'll make sure we get those to you very soon so that when we do have that subcommittee, we can address those. So, in addition, some of those same items that when I'm talking with principals or saying, you know, it's air conditioning, it's, you know, different, I hear very similar things over and over again. So, I think it would be important, and I welcome the opportunity to sit with folks at the city side, to really try to map out a plan. It's not pointing fingers. It's just trying to make a plan so that we can address these issues, you know, systematically. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think when we're talking about maintenance of buildings and dealing with heat issues and so forth, I think part of the problem that no one's ever really brought up, but someone brought this up to me a short time ago, is that over the course of the time that we had new buildings constructed here in the city, new school buildings, that every single one of them has a different manufacturer of heat, cooling, plumbing. So, when you get a call for, you know, our boiler's not working, well, let's see, which one is that, which kind, you know, what's the brand on that one? And are those parts available? Those are issues that I think in the, in the very, very long term, I think we should be looking at standardizing what we put in all our buildings. And then that makes that kind of repair so much easier, so much easier, probably less expensive, too.
Been talked about for many years, but you're correct. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just because we, you know, we obviously have a number of motions that touch on a lot of similar issues and whatnot, what I think might be helpful is that, you know, looking at the superintendent and her team, to perhaps collapse these into the same meetings in some cases, so we don't have to bring Mr. Howie out too often. But I think one of the key things that would actually tie in with one of the earlier motions would be if we are seeing the similar things at various school sites, and I absolutely believe we can, that that's the case, that there are the same problems happening in a number of different places, we could have the opportunity to kind of bundle together our similar issues. That could be where going to an outside contractor, where, again, harkening back to one of the earlier motions, that you could bring in someone who only does windows, but is going to deal with 10 different window issues and then go away. So that, you know, that's something that we can make a one-time investment in and then allow our custodians and the maintenance staff and all that to focus on the everyday. And if we're expanding some of those roles, that may give them the bandwidth to be able to do that. So, I do think that making sure we look at this in a comprehensive way could give us an opportunity to really make the most out of the money we're going to invest. And really, to everyone's point, it's the city's money that gets invested. But we could do this kind of prep work, I think, in a way that could make it more appealing and more impactful if we, again, look at the big picture as we kind of go through this process.
That was well said. I mean, my concern is, I don't want to give the city manager and the superintendent busy work to do. I mean, it's not that it's busy work. It's important work. But there's expectations we have of them. But at the same time, we have to address these issues. So, I think we can, we're able to bring these together. And I think the dialogue has been very good tonight regarding these matters. All right, everybody in favor? Okay, thank you. Approved. Next, does it need a second? Next motion by Mr. Dakota and Mr. Nutter, request the superintendent arrange a joint meeting of the facility subcommittee, of the city council, and school committee to discuss these priorities and to set motion the paperwork that will seek assistance for those, these repairs and improvements from the MSBA. That's been approved. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's really important. I think the Lowell Sun brought up the issue. And I think it's paperwork that really has to be generated by the city to approach the MSBA. So, I think we should be meeting with these issues and see what we can possibly get from the MSBA to help us along with these issues, to solve these problems.
Mr. Nutter?
You know, when, after the Collins report came out, and the Collins report I thought was kind of unfairly critical of the school, past school committees. And what upset me even more than that was to hear a city councilor on the radio saying, "Well, I don't know who's to blame for not pursuing the MSBA grant funding." And I found it kind of ironic because if you look at the state of disrepair at most of our schools, the city hasn't shown a great willingness in the past to fund maintenance. And so, maybe past school committees didn't want to bring it forward because the city wouldn't spend any money on doing regular maintenance, let alone doing something from MSBA grant funding. We have a manager and a council now who at least have expressed a willingness to look at what we've done in the past and ignore it and start working on the issues. The MSBA has a funding program called the Accelerated Repair Program. But it states very clearly in that, that districts are going to be required to appropriate funding quickly in order to adhere to an accelerated project schedule. So, I'm hoping that when we meet and the city council, who again has shown, you know, a willingness to get involved with school issues, as we saw in the case of the superintendent, now get involved and agree to back up their words and actions with supporting some changes. The Accelerated Repair Program offered by the MSBA focuses on the preservation of existing assets by performing energy-efficient, cost-saving upgrades. The program is primarily for the repair and replacement, or replacement, of roofs, windows, doors, boilers, and with other potential systems as determined by the MSBA and funding availability. So, as Mr. Dakota said, what we need to do is, and as Ms. Martin said, get some joint meetings together, combine a lot of these things, come up with a good, solid list, and then have the city council agree to work with us that if we get this punch list, and I don't care if we submit 10 or 15 projects, you can submit as many as you want to the MSBA. They can choose which ones to act on or not. But if they're going to act on them, the city needs to be prepared to fund whatever portion of it that they share. And like I said, I was a little upset that I thought the Collins report was unfair to past school committees. And I was disappointed in the response from that councilor on the radio, kind of criticizing them when the city, if you look at what they've done for maintenance in the schools, you know, hasn't exactly been a shining star. Thank you.
Mr. Howie? I'm sorry, Ms. Martin first. You had your, all right, Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing to say. I like the motion, and I'm glad we're doing a lot of things the Lowell Sun's telling us to do. That's what it seems like in the past six months to me, reading all the editorials, all the things that would leak to the Lowell Sun, and now they're telling us who to hire. They've done it for the past month or two, and we're doing a good job. The school committee should be very proud that we're listening to the Lowell Sun. Thank you.
Ms. Martin? The, in regard to the MSBA and what's just been brought up, the MSBA now is acting a lot different in a sense of, their major interest was supporting the building of new buildings. They now recognize it's actually cheaper for them to help the cities because there are many towns, I mean, if a boiler goes in the system, you're talking $30,000, $40,000. A lot of school systems, especially the towns, do not have the type of money to take care of those issues. So, I think now that we're more aware of this and the MSBA is reacting in a different, with a different direction, this will be very helpful. All in favor of this motion? Thanks. Ms. Martin?
I just wanted to make one quick comment, just having been here during a lot of these discussions. And I have to say, my understanding of MSBA and kind of going back over these last, you know, significant number of years, my impression, and what I had been told, was you couldn't apply for multiple projects. And you couldn't apply for a new project until the final, until the, until a project was done, you couldn't apply for a new one. I don't mean completed being built, but like that it was finally approved before you could submit another one to be considered. That was always my understanding. It's why we had had such a challenging conversation when we were talking initially about trying to decide between investing in the high school versus investing in a middle school, which at that point in time, I mean, again, we're talking like five, at least five years ago, the challenge was, our real issue was a bubble that was coming into the middle school at that point. We knew that it was going to be an issue. So, I mean, this, the committee at that time really did have some strong opinions about where to, which project we should really be investing in because we were told quite clearly, you could only submit one. So, to your point, Mr. Mayor, if they are changing some of their approaches so that, you know, that you have opportunities to submit multiple proposals, that's great news. And I can see that it being very helpful, not just for small districts, but for districts like us. But, you know, I can say that that was never my understanding of MSBA, you know, having served on this committee. It was always the exact opposite, that you were really limited in what you could apply for.
Absolutely. But the thing is, the more we know their laws and their, you know, and their ordinances, the better off we are. We have now a personnel subcommittee report. You made a motion to instruct the acting superintendent to move forward with her plan to institute the audit and to put the position out for an interim, you know, human resource director. And I'd like to have you give a report on this matter.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, the meeting was held on August 28th. From the subcommittee present with myself, Ms. Doherty, and Mr. Howie, we also had other members of the school committee in attendance, Mayor Samaris, Mr. Dakota, Mr. Nutter, and Mr. Lay. And from the school department, we had acting superintendent Durkin, assistant superintendent Desmond, and curriculum and instru, oh, I'm sorry, assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, and Mr. Hall, our legal counsel. We were really dealing with one motion at this subcommittee, requesting to review the current human resources position, look for alternative approaches. Obviously, with the change with our, the interim HR director retiring at the end of next month, we did know that we were under real pressure to deal with that situation. The acting superintendent did provide us with some information with AR, kind of Plan A, reaching out to NESDEC, New England School, come on, help me out. I don't know what it stands for.
NASDAQ.
Okay, that word, that's what I call it, too. But okay, if that's good enough. Anyway, so, trying to use them as a mechanism to be able to recruit for an interim individual who'd be able to come in. I'm hoping tonight we may get some updated information on that. And then, really just discussing whether it was prudent to, you know, we had a couple different alternatives coming after that. But I guess the real question is going to be about the NASDAQ and where we are. Nothing that was, that kind of as we went through this process was definitively determined. So, we are looking tonight to have, show some additional conversations on that. And so, the full committee can be part of it. I'd submit that as a report of progress.
Ms. Martin made a motion. I need a second on this report. A second by Mr. Howie. All right, we're now going to reports of the superintendent... All right, we're now going to reports of the superintendent, budget update. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we last spoke at the special meeting, we do have some information relative to the budget. Over the last week and a half, we have met as a leadership team to go line by line through the budget and review our budget. We also met with the city departments relative to the budget to review our findings and have their feedback relative to their review. So I would ask Assistant Superintendent Turner to share with you an overall brief update relative to that at this point.
Okay. Good evening. The superintendent has stated, "We drafted a summary of findings." Can you hear me? All right, good. So we met and we went line by line in the budget and identified areas of shortfalls. Most of the shortfalls were due to offsets that are not available with food, service, or use of facilities funds. We did meet with the city, and we confirmed that these accounts don't have sufficient balances. So at this time, we, we've identified $1.8 million worth of questionable items that we want to ensure that we have funding for. We have $1.6 million of additional revenue, that includes the $1.1 million in additional Chapter 70 revenue, along with the $400,000 for hurricane relief. So we're hoping that those available funds will help offset the budget shortfalls that we've identified. We ask that we don't make any moves at this time to make additional allocations until we have a chance to do a thorough review. Again, we've done just a preliminary review at this time. So if we have a chance to do the thorough review and meet with the Department of Ed to identify what they're going to allow for direct and indirect costs, it will give us the time to give you concrete information.
Before we have any questions, we have some registered speakers. I'd like to have the speakers come forth.
Wendy Krakaroburg.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendy Krakaroburg. I'm the principal at the Pine Arts Magnet School here in Lowell at 145 Boylston Street, and I'm coming to speak to the committee tonight on behalf of several principals who have been in conversation throughout the last week and a half or so amongst ourselves and with Superintendent Durkin, around an issue that we're not 100% sure that you're fully aware of, and that is that in addition to the loss of the positions that are stated on your priority items, which you'll get to a little bit further in the agenda, there were 19 paraprofessional positions that are not being filled this year, and these positions are real positions, primarily in our schools. They are one-to-one paraprofessionals for students on IEPs. And in the case of my school, I have three students who need one-to-one paraprofessional on their IEPs, and at this point, there isn't sufficient funding. There was a need to reduce the number of overall paraprofessionals by 19. Initially, we were told it was 17, and it grew to 19. And so at this point, because there are no funds to pay for these positions, we are tasked with now trying to find people within our building who work in other roles as paraprofessionals to work in these roles. In my school, however, I have three students coming in who need one-to-ones. I have only two instructional paraprofessionals that are not already tied to special ed or early childhood that are providing required ratios or required services. So even if I pull every single paraprofessional I have on my staff, I'm still short. And by pulling every paraprofessional that I might have available on my staff, I'm unable to run my first grade reading groups, my second grade reading groups, cover lunch duties, safety, supervision, and instruction. With 13 days until the opening of school, I am losing sleep. Every principal I know who is in this position, and with 19 positions, there are many of us, we are all losing sleep. We are very concerned, obviously, about all of the positions that have been eliminated, but we have a legal obligation to provide services in IEPs for students. We have, the legal language says that it's the responsibility of the principal to make sure that anything in those IEPs that's written in there is provided, and so I'm here to advocate on behalf of principals that feel accountable for this, that we need to consider these 19 positions that I don't see anywhere on paper at this point.
Thank you. School committee, any questions? Thank you very much. Next.
Pete.
Sorry.
So, to the point, any student that's coming into a school or is already attending a specific school, if they're coming in with an IEP requiring one-on-one paraprofessional support, I mean, that's just a baseline, so that's absolutely happening.
So, we have to, so let me, if, I apologize.
Thank you.
I just jumped in, I apologize. So, we have been learning of this, I have been, I'm going to say, I have been learning of this from our leaders, and I spoke with Susan Mulligan, and also Assistant Superintendent Turner spoke with Ms. Mulligan today as well, to really look specifically at each specific position, those power positions. So, in some cases, very few, but in some cases, it was a one-to-one para at a fourth grade level that was moving to a fifth grade, which moved along with the child. But there are other positions that were eliminated due to attrition, and, or like retirements, or they were long-term subs, and those positions were eliminated. So we really need, and I just leaned over and asked Ms. Turner if we could have that thorough analysis, you know, earlier than later, because we are starting school, and she said that she could, with her team, really sit down, now that she's here full-time, and we could have something prepared by Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. I know we've had many meetings, but I also know that our leaders in our schools, we need to be fully functioning for our children in a week. So, we can certainly consider coming back together to review the real specific items, and we'd really like to do that responsibly, because if we can get some findings from the state relative to the food service information, and if we have to pay back our accounts, that's going to impact what we can bring back. But legitimately, when we looked at the $1.1 million that we were getting from the state, we could have almost brought back every staff member that was on the priority list, but now we have these, the paraprofessional that we really need to look at as well as a whole. So I would ask you to allow us to do that in-depth work in the next few days, and come back to you next week.
Next speaker. I'm sorry.
All right. And I understand your, the response, and I think that that's appropriate. I do think that this warrants being looked at very carefully. You know, I think that we had conversations during the budget hearings about this approach of just anyone who was leaving by attrition was just an automatic cut. I get that that's easy, and I get that it's kind of, in many cases, the seen as the least painful way to do it, if someone's retiring or moving or whatnot, you just automatically cut that position. But at that time, we had conversations about needing to be thoughtful about which position, we couldn't just use attrition as the guiding, you know, principle for eliminating positions, because there's real work that needs to get done, that many times you need to replace those, you know, certain positions. So, I mean, that's something that, you know, again, is problematic. So, looking at, kind of going through this process and seeing, in terms of reporting back to us, it would be really helpful to see which ones are mandated, which ones are tied to IEPs or any other plans, so that we know that those are the ones, you know, there's no conversation about those, those are baseline, need to be provided. The next level is to find out how many of these positions and where they've been eliminated, where they are providing the additional support of helping the school run. I mean, those, it's, we all know the work that paras do, and how important it is to keeping our schools up and running. So, being able to kind of get the information in a way that is prioritized, I think will be really helpful, and I, you know, again, this is, it's incredibly challenging, and I appreciate that everyone's jumping on board to do this work.
If you don't mind, let's go to the speakers, so we can get through that portion, and then it's open to any questions you have. Next.
Peter Holt.
Good evening. I'm Peter Holt, I'm the principal of the Bartlett Community Partnership School, and I just wanted to join, I don't have a lot to add to this, other than that the situation that we're looking at is, you know, we realize that any IEP that requires staffing, and I, in my case, I have a student that, I have several students that are part of a three-to-one, where it's not necessarily a one-to-one, but it is, they require support, and so we have to provide it, and so, I mean, those positions have to be there, but if we're asked to find those positions from our building where they don't really exist, they may be, on paper they might exist, but in terms of running the school, we don't have any staff that isn't vital to the running of the school at this point, and so, on the very best day where every single person is present, and there are no meetings, and there's nothing out of the ordinary, we can probably make dough without a couple of our paraprofessionals, but that's not the way schools work. So, you know, anytime you have an IEP meeting that requires a regular education teacher to be available as well, we're not pulling them out of their prep period, because that would be a violation of the school, of the union contract, and teachers need their time to prepare the work for students, so we provide them coverage in their class. Who is the coverage we provide? It's a paraprofessional that we have in the building that has other roles as well, but that's able to step in and make sure that learning continues as opposed to, you know, everything coming to a stop. So, we really do the best that we can with the staff that we have, and we get really creative, but I think it's very, very challenging to consider opening the school year short positions that we're already struggling to stretch to make things work. So I would ask that that be looked at very carefully, and I know that's already been proposed, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Leslie Oxton.
Good evening, school committee members, Ms. Durkin. My name is Leslie Oxton, I live at 25 Harris Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm here tonight to urge you one last time not to vote to eliminate the library aides. If you take this vote, you will essentially be closing all libraries in every school except the high school. By doing so, you will be going back in time almost 30 years to when there were no libraries in the Lowell Public Schools. When former Mayor Bud Carfield speaks about his time as chairman of the school committee, he always mentions his proudest accomplishment, the building of new schools in Lowell. Each of these schools included a big, beautiful library media center, and each school employed a library media specialist and a library aide. These new school libraries, along with the libraries that were eventually located in the older schools, gave Lowell schoolchildren equal footing with our neighboring cities and towns. In time, due to budget restrictions, the library media specialists were let go, leaving the library aide to take on all of the duties. I know there hasn't been a lot of outcry from parents and residents about the library's closing, but I think the reason is, they don't realize for the past 10 years, we haven't been aiding anyone. We've been the ones reading stories, helping do research, cataloging, shelving, and anything and everything else that it takes to run a library. I don't think they understand that there will be no more libraries. Something I want to touch on that was a motion by Mr. Nutter tonight, safety. It's in our contract, library aides cover for the school clerk. We cover lunch, we cover if they're out for a day, days, and even weeks. When we're sitting at that desk, we are the front line for anything that comes in that front door, good or bad. We know the building, the students, staff, the phone system, emergency procedures, Raptor, and we even had to take the safety certification course that Mike Cassidy gave for the clerks. When the clerk is out, who will do this? How many people will they have to train? And it will be, will it be paras that are so important to the students that they'll be pulling it, or will be the admin that are already pulled in a million directions? I know it doesn't seem like a big deal now, because, but that's because you've always had us doing it, so you never had to worry about it. I know school clerks are already asking their principals, "Who's going to cover for me when I have to be out?" And nobody seems to know. So that's just, and that's a safety thing. We sit at that front desk, just like them, so, just something for you to consider. I know that if money is found in the future, there may be an attempt to bring libraries back, but before that happens, some of the aides will be forced to retire in order to keep their health insurance, and our deadline is August 30th, for those of us that, you know, aren't physically capable. I had a conversation with Mr. Georges on the radio last week, some of us just aren't physically capable of taking some of these paraprofessional positions. We've looked at them. If it involves, you know, I joked with him, changing diapers, I, 61 years old, I want to change my grandchildren's diapers, and I'm not saying that's not a job, but it's just not the job for me, and for some of the other aides. Lifting out of wheelchairs, there's just these health professional jobs.
We're going to need you to sum up.
They just aren't made for everybody, let's put it that way. And I know that a lot of the schools are going to start dismantling the libraries.
Excuse me, we're going to need you to sum up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So anyway, I didn't plan on coming here tonight, I didn't plan on speaking, but I just couldn't live with myself if I didn't give it one more try, because it seems to me that due to the irregular issues with the budget, the only people that are suffering are the children of the Lowell School Public Schools and the school library aides. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and I urge you to please do the right thing tonight and keep our libraries open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Ortiz.
Do you want me to give the address again?
Yes.
Or, no? So I just wanted to say that on top of the paraprofessionals, the equality for students. Students have a right to access the guidance counselors, they have a right to the school nurse, they have the right to the library aides, they have the right to the paraprofessionals. You know, I think it's great that you want to do the equality for the children with IEPs, but you have over 14,000 students in your district. Every single student should be reaching equality. I'm a little bit concerned, is it the hurricane relief aide, they came through for the hurricanes, there's an awful lot of students in the past several decades that have spoken to as an advocate that literally have been in classrooms where they have to translate. I'm greatly concerned, you have a desegregation order, there was supposed to be bilingual staff, the students don't even have access to that. So, if we're going to have a conversation about what they need access to, let's give them equality. Let's give every single student the support that they deserve in this district, so that we can do the amazing job that we're capable of doing, and stop doing it to just a certain few. It's just, it's just getting too much. So let's get the nurses, let's get every single support staff back in the school, and if we need to have an honest conversation with the city about giving you more money, then that's what should be done. It's our tax dollars, these students deserve equality, each and every single one of them, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the floor? Mr. Nutter?
You know, it amazes, it actually sickens me. We sat here and we passed a budget, and we were told that, you know, this was the budget, it was all set. And to look at the amount of things that were underfunded, or charged that shouldn't have been charged. I didn't know about this Paris situation until I just heard the principals discussing that, because at one point, I believe, the former superintendent and the former business manager assured everybody that because of people who were retiring, there would be jobs for these people to take, and now, again, we're short. And by the way, this doesn't even mention the $500,000 deficit that we already have carried forward to next year in our contractually obligated sick leave buyback account. We were well on our way to end up as Winchenden ended up. This is a disgrace. Unfortunately, we took the vote in June to eliminate the libraries. We can't bring them back. We don't have the funds, and it saddens me that we will not have libraries in our elementary and middle school. I have been told that the contract for the paras has been adjusted, that the paras will be the ones who will have to fill in and cover for the clerks, but if we've just heard from a couple of principals, we may not even have paras available to do that job. We need to find, we need to get this cleaned up as soon as you can. This is a daunting task that you are facing, and that this committee- This is a daunting task that you are facing and that this committee is facing as far as the funding goes. That's why we need to sit down with the city side and we need to discuss funding. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like some clarification on what the shortfall is. I know the superintendent mentioned that right now, we're looking at a 1.8 million shortfall. Does that include the $500,000 move for, for sick leave buyback? Does it include the additional $500,000 for the buses that we now have to add for the new school year? Is that included in that 1.8 million number?
Hi. That's why we said we wanted to do a thorough analysis. So, there are lines. If you see in your packet, you actually have two different versions. One of them is a conservative estimate. It shows that even with the 1.6, you would be in the hole 267,000. The second sheet is showing that after we confirm with the Department of Ed, if certain things are allowed, if certain cost, you know, custodial charges to food service were allowed, those deficits that are listed on the first sheet would decrease, which would free up more funds, which would cover things that you've mentioned, the 500,000. One particular line is 661,000. There's a negative 661,000 being added back for custodial staff. I kept it in there knowing that a good chunk of that is going to be allowed. But I kept it in there just because of the reason you said. Today is my first day, so I haven't had a chance to really review and see how much transportation was short, how much was short on sick leave buyback. So, I kept it in there to be conservative. So, after we do this thorough analysis, and I do agree with the superintendent, that by next week, after I get to call the Department of Ed, ask questions, see what's, you know, if they've made decisions on what's considered direct, indirect, I think we'll be able to give you a clearer picture.
Follow-up. So, we really don't know yet exactly what the total shortfall is. Do we know how much is being contested by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in terms of revolving fund? What is the number that they have said we have?
They haven't given a number because there's moving parts. There's several different issues going on and that's exactly why we can't give a clearer picture. But we plan on talking to them within the next couple of days and seeing if we can get a concrete number.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly think that this is the appropriate step to take moving forward, to take this time. And it's admittedly not a long time. So, I appreciate the speed with which you're confident you can, you can pull this information together for us. You know, I think that, I think there are a lot of concerns that were expressed during our budget process. There are a lot of assurances given and they have not come to pass. And a lot of the information we received was simply not accurate. I'm gravely concerned about the chargebacks in terms of the revolving accounts. I think that there was great license taken with that and that not only does that put us behind the eight ball because we've spent money inappropriately, it then requires us to backfill that money to the source. So, I mean, the 1.1 that I think we were all, I'll speak for myself. I really felt that that was going to give us the opportunity to bring back positions, you know, particularly the library aides, the guidance counselor position at the, at the high school. I mean, those are things that were on our priority list that I think, again, I believe was, had very strong support on the committee. When that 1.1 was kind of determined, it really felt like that was going to be the way that we could make up some ground. It is incredibly dispiriting to be at this point now where not only is it not going to allow us to bring back things that we know are important, that we wanted to bring back, but we're even deeper in the hole than we were before. And I think that the spending that happened prior to this has just put us in a situation where this district is in danger of truly being crippled in our ability to serve students. You know, the issues of equity, the issues of being able to provide every one of our students with what they need to be successful. It's the ultimate goal of, I know, every member of this committee, every member of this administration, we all want to be able to do that. We've been put in a position where it is becoming harder and harder for us even to aspire to do the, do the job we want to do and provide the services we want to provide. And that is extremely, as I say, disheartening and something that I think, you know, again, moving forward, I am hoping that we will get information in the next, you know, as you go through this process that will give us some hope of being able to make some of these changes. You know, some of the topics that were brought up by our speakers and I appreciate and respect people coming down to talk, you know, the library aides, it is incredibly disappointing that that is feeling like it's not even a possibility now. You know, having voted to bring them back last time when they were initially eliminated by the administration, a member of that, I was a member of the committee that voted to bring them back then. I recognize the value of them. I was a member of this committee when we voted to put them in abeyance and hope that we would be able to bring them back. So, it's not a matter of not recognizing the value that they bring to our schools, absolutely not. It is just the crushing reality of what these budget issues have led us to. I say the same on the paraprofessional front. Again, this is work that is desperately needed in our schools. These are not extras that we're talking about. These are absolute fundamentals that need to be there. And we're in a position now, having mismanaged our funds, where we can't provide them. And that's really a devastating place for our district to be. And again, I try to remain hopeful that as we get some additional information, we may be able to get some relief in terms of some of the indirect charges. And certainly, I think there's some cause for hope in that. But again, looking, looking forward to seeing what, what small possibilities there are for, to improve this situation. Thank you.
Mr. Hoi.
I know you just got here and this work that you did here, I got too many questions to ask you tonight, but I just would hit the first one. This, the offsets, in my opinion, I think the offsets are available. And I think the reason that you might not see that yet is this budget is from a guy that came from Illinois. His name was Gary Frisch. I believe when you go over things, you'll find out that the offsets are available. The superintendent wanted to cut 2.5 million out of the budget in our team. That's what they came up with. I think a lot of those cuts were reinstated or put back in. And, you know, and I want to give you the benefit of the doubt and I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt. I'm going to support you because I think you came from the school, the Jay Lang school. That's how I feel personally. And I know Jay knew the money very well, too. But I believe when you look at this, you've got to keep that in mind. It's just a different formula. Sometimes they did things a little different, but I think you'll be surprised. And I have too many questions to ask you. Maybe I can get some time this week and address them all. But I think we're going to be better off than we look once you go over everything. Because I have to disagree with that. And just on the first one, it's like page fifteen, line thirty-five, thirty-seven. It says unavailable offsets, superintendents. Well, when you look at that, it's really the CFO and the HR director, not the superintendent, correct?
First of all, thank you because I would love to meet with you. Anything I can learn from you with the institutional knowledge, I would love that. But I wanted to point out that that's why we wanted to do the thorough review before finalizing anything. This is a draft. The unavailable offsets that are listed here are actually offsets to the superintendent positions hitting food service. And until we get confirmation from the Department of Ed, letting us prorate a portion of the superintendent or my salary, we thought we should add it back and be conservative until we get those decisions from the Department of Ed.
Okay. And you're talking about now that indirect cost?
Yes.
Indirect cost, correct? And is the number like, I don't know, 10.8% that we have to stay in that range? Something like that, 8.6. Twelve percent. And I believe if I remember correctly, that comes from something that happened two years ago. And this type of thing has happened, not like forever, but even under Jay Lang, stuff like that happens. You have to wait for the state, but the indirect costs, if I'm correct, you can spend it unlimited, really, right? Like if it's for food or for machinery and stuff like that. Now, the principals were all told last year, I believe it was last year, that they all have to go out and anybody that goes and works in that cafeteria, they want to, you know, like a time card or a time slip, for instance. So, okay, I have too much to ask you and I'll make it at another time, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a quick couple of questions and it has to do with, and people have been advocating for some wonderful things and we can't say, I think Ms. Martin had summed it up very well, that we wish we could put everybody back in and we believe that. But no one's mentioned three reading specialists that we have that I think we need to make sure we keep them because they're really important and I don't know where we are with that. And there was some kind of an agreement apparently for speech therapists, too. Because those are in high, high demand and we want to keep them. So, I think we have to look at that, too. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you for bringing up the reading teachers. We are meeting with our principals tomorrow. We met as a team to discuss that and some of the options that were presented to our leaders. So, we want to share with them what we're able to do relative to that. And we'll be able to provide you with that information following that meeting.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to our CFO, business manager, I'm just curious. Let's step back for a second. I'm just wondering what, what these figures are for, if that's not, this is not, this is not the real report. I mean, this is not the final report, is that correct? So, I'm just wondering what, what these reports are supposed to do for us tonight?
Well, to be honest, I think this report is simply trying to show you that we shouldn't make any decisions at this time until we have the chance to do a thorough analysis. It's trying to show you that we are getting an additional 1.6 million with the Chapter 70 revenue and the hurricane relief. But if you look at just the draft of findings, we've already more or less need it. So, it's more, it's our way of saying, please hold off until we have a chance this week to look at everything. Look at the sick leave buyback, the transportation. Today was my first day. It's just an opportunity to say, give us a couple of days so that we can give you a concrete report.
So, by, I'm sorry, by then, will we have another meeting and go through over this line by line?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further, Mr. Nutter?
Could I respectfully ask for a suspension of the rules? I don't know who this gentleman is back here, but he has his hand raised.
I know, I understand that, but we, well, excuse me, I mean, in order to run a meeting, I run the meeting.
I understand. That's why, that's why I'm asking if we could have a suspension of the rules.
But you have three minutes to speak, sir. That's it. Please give your name and address.
Rashid Mabali. I'm at 20 Luz Drive in Lowell. I'm a parent. I'm a taxpayer. First moved to Lowell in 2007. Brought my first house, townhouse, in 2007. Had a couple of kids in Lowell. This past year, I decided I was going to move out of Lowell, go to Chompsford, maybe better community as far as schools go. And you know what? I didn't do it. I purchased another house in Lowell. I haven't gotten time to be here because I work for a living. My kids currently go to John Doc's school because I was disappointed in the public school system. But I stayed in Lowell because I'm hoping to bring my kids to a Lowell high school. But after sitting here for a few minutes, I'm really disappointed. I hear a lot of, I've seen stopping in newspapers, the high school is one of them. The superintendent leaving is another one. You've got a fiscal situation right now that's out of, out of control. I don't know why. Economy seems to be good. I don't know what's going on in Lowell. But I would say one thing is if the school committee is not in order, the town is going to fall apart. As a parent, the most important thing for me is a good school system. And anywhere in this country, if you're looking to fix a lot of things that you're talking about today, it starts with education. If these kids are not being educated, we're going to have some problems fiscally. So, we're talking about a lot of things here, none of which are talking about education and educating these children. And if they're not passing and the grades are not high, I'll sell my house in a heartbeat and move to another town. I can make that move. But I love this town because I belong here, you know? I feel comfortable in Lowell. But after sitting here and feeling like, you know, there's no real direction as far as fixing some of these real issues, it's disappointing. And I hope the school committee takes their job seriously because a lot of us depend on it. We depend on you guys to do the right thing. I know a lot of folks here that have good jobs, good-paying jobs, don't live in Lowell. I know it's not a popular thing to say, but I'm going to say it. Superintendents, for a long time, I've not, I've not seen one superintendent lives in Lowell. Do you miss? So, what I'm saying is, it's not to pick on you personally, but we need people to invest in the future of Lowell. How can you have a school system that doesn't have a library? It's not serious. Let's get serious about the seriousness of educating children in Lowell and do whatever it takes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this matter, on the budget? Madam Superintendent, you all set? Next issue is Lowell High School pool update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that I had, we had a discussion at a previous meeting relative to the status of the pool and we have been in meetings with the city manager and her team. And I know that, I was informed that also Ms. Bastide was in meetings with the city manager earlier before my appointment. So, there has been discussion around whether the pool could be repaired, whether it was cost-effective to do so. And at this time, it is, has been deemed that that cannot happen. And so, I really want to commend the head of school and especially David Lozinski, the athletic director, for working really diligently over the course of the last week and a half to provide us with a proposal for the pool. So, with your permission, I'd ask Mr. Lozinski if he could share what he was able to find out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Superintendent, your team, the honorable members of the school committee. I'd like to thank you for having me here this evening. When we realized that the pool was going to go offline, I got on the phone, actually, I went over to UMass Lowell. They had agreed to rent us pool time at $125 per hour. So, we'll be renting the pool for 1.5 hours, which is 187.50. The rental time, which is a fabulous rental time, is 3:15 to 4:45. During December vacation and February vacation, we would still get prime hours. So, what's our prime hour? Well, if our kids don't have school, it's somewhere between 10:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon. It's not a late-time hour rental. So, we were very happy to hear that and, you know, secure pool time for our kids. You know, our girls' team in the fall and our boys' team in the winter. So, I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions we got in the pool issue? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next issue is Lowell High School schedule update. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did get an even more recent update today from head of school, Mary Ann Bastide, relative to the schedule. The plan is that the schedule will be in the portal and live tomorrow for teachers to access. The goal is to, as soon as possible, within the next couple of days, to get all of the schedules printed for students and get them out and mailed so that they receive them as soon as possible. So, that is good news. But there is, you know, a detailed timeline. So, that is good news, but there is, you know, a detailed timeline and some of the things that we have discussed previously that did impact the schedule being produced on time. Additionally, as I mentioned before, we, I will be meeting with Ms. Bastide and her team to really etch out what that moving forward looks like because there are some general steps that are outlined there, but I think we need to have some specific timelines so that we can ensure that we won't be in this situation next school year. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Nada?
Through you to the superintendent. Will the student schedules also be put on Aspen for them to be able to look on Aspen also?
Not for tomorrow, that goes for the portal, my understanding, I want to be correct, you know, in saying that, but for right now, it's going to be live for the teachers and they review them and then they'll be printing out the schedules for the students in the next couple of days. I will find out that answer for you, though.
Ms. Martin?
And so, we're confident that this is at 100%?
No, it's not at 100%.
Okay, so 77% was the last number?
So, with 77%, I know that they, what I was told from the scheduler is that typically at the start of the school year, it's about at 82 to 85% and they're estimating that it's pretty close to that at this point.
Mr. Hoy?
This scheduling thing, Mayor, I believe you brought it up not too long ago. I just have a couple of questions through you to the Madam Superintendent. Guidance counselors, they fall under LSAA, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm not sure if it was five days or 10 days at the end of the school year that they are supposed to stay longer. Now, this year, because the school got out on the 27th, it would have brought us past July 1st and it didn't, they didn't work, I believe. I'm not sure, but I don't believe they worked. And I don't want, I just felt it made Mrs. Bastide look bad. I think it was more of a problem with that LSAA and when those 10 days or five days, I don't have it in front of me, I'm not that sure, but I believe it was 10 days when the school year ends, I think would have solved that problem. But where it went by July 1st, I basically think they just said, you know, forget it, we'll catch it later. And that's just my opinion again.
It really doesn't affect, that doesn't affect the schedule?
It doesn't? Okay. But I don't believe it was Mrs. Bastide's problem, I think it had something to do with it.
I didn't say that, I just said the issue of the lateness of the guidance council, that work had to be in prior to school getting out.
Right, but that's the 10 days I'm talking about?
No.
No?
It's not related.
Okay. I just believe that's what they said, we're not doing it and they just walked away. That's how I feel and I'm sorry if I'm wrong.
Doesn't work that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Director of Human Resource Position update. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an approved update. School committee member, Jack Dari, inquired during August 8 personnel subsidy needing access to staffs and job roles in the Director of Human Resources.
It's not on, I apologize. So, the Director of Human Resource Position had not been posted prior to August 8th. That was the question that you asked and you asked me to provide that report.
Any questions? Ms. Martin? Okay. Else? Report on motions.
Yes, this is the, there are actually two documents that you have received. I thank the committee for their consideration in recommending to remove and prioritizing. If the committee, the makers of the motions haven't responded and would like to, please just communicate with my assistant and she will make sure she updates this. So, the update should be reflected in the second document that you typically do receive and I met with the leadership team today and we will start to tackle some of those based on prioritizing the items and those things that we can address fairly quickly and easily for you and then others will have to make a, you know, a scheduled plan to get that out.
Questions? List of eligible teachers?
Yes, this is just the regular list of eligible teachers for your consideration.
Personnel report?
And the same with the updates on the personnel reports, including retirements and resignations.
All right, I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent from 9/1 through 9/8 as reports of progress. Need a motion, Ms. Dari, seconded by Mr. Nada. Thank you. Next, we have home education. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is just requests for one child to be homeschooled.
Motion to approve by Ms. Dari, seconded by Mr. Nada. New business consideration, sorry, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dari?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Seven yeas approved.
All right, new business consideration of employees from priority list.
Yes, this was asked to be brought forward by the committee. This is the priority list that you had generated. Not included in that priority list were also two staff members for the television studio that were included in the budget and then really received layoff notices after we, you know, found out about the PEG funds. So, those are there. I know we have discussed at length the status of the budget at this point and there is one item, though, that I would like to bring forward, that when we were meeting with, talking with principals and also looking at the budget line by line, we did find that there was one, one teaching position so far that we found that they were, they were listed on the grant budget and they were also listed on the general budget. Now, that, so we put that position immediately, we put it on the grant budget. That being said, it wasn't, it's not just an open position at this point because we have been in conversation with one of our principals who has a new setup with elementary and middle school division and looking at their schedule. I think Ms. Desmond has some specifics because when we, when we heard from Mr. McCreeven, we asked, I asked Ms. Desmond, who, you know, has a really good, strong skill set with schedules, to really look at every different option she possibly could with Mr. McCreeven to see if there was any way that we could do without an additional allied arts teacher. And I'll ask Ms. Desmond to report at this time.
Thank you. So, the request at the STEM Academy was for an additional allied arts teacher to make a seventh allied arts position to be able to cover the contractual prep times of teachers and also be able to provide children with the experiences of time on learning in art, music, phys ed, as every other student in our middle schools. So, when I looked at the schedules, Mr. McCreeven and his team had looked at many different scheduling options to try to figure out if they could meet all of the union-required preparatory time for teachers and have kids have the experience fairly, as every other student has across the district, with six positions, which is what they were slated for having in the budget. We could not figure a way. I do want to provide you with a little information about what similar-sized schools have. So, for example, the STEM Academy currently is scheduled to have 750 students. If I look at similarly-sized schools like the Daily at 722 and the Wang at 724 currently, they each have seven allied arts. That is what the STEM is in need of, is the additional allied arts position to have seven allied arts, to be able to cover the contractual agreements for teachers, to get preparatory time and to be able to provide students with the same amount of time on learning in art, the same amount of time on learning in music and phys ed. So, that is the, that was what we discovered. As Acting Superintendent Durkin has stated, there is, on the general budget, funding for a teaching position because one teacher was counted in both the Title I budget and the general budget. So, if that teacher remains on the Title I, then there is, there is funding. If you have any other questions?
Mr. Nada?
So, are you looking for a motion from someone to hire that teacher or are you just looking for permission to do that since it's already in the budget?
Yeah, so it is, the position is, there is a position in the budget and we'd like the opportunity for that principal to be able to, you know, post interview and do all of that so they can get their schedule up and running.
So, I make a motion to, I mean, it's in the budget already. So, I make a motion to allow the principal to fill that position.
Second, Ms. Dari, thank you. All right, Mr. Hoy? A roll call for us.
Okay.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dari?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
No.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nada, Mr. Hoy, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I remember the Rogers School principal asking for an art teacher before and I think he was refused by the past superintendent and I don't have the reasons with me, I can get it next time we come here, why the superintendent didn't want to have that. That was part of, I believe, some of the $2.5 million in cuts that our team tried to get because that's what we needed to do and I think this is just another, one of the questions I want to ask Ms. Turner, but I'll wait for another time, thank you. I just voted no.
All right, that's been passed. Oh, Ms. Martin?
Just on the topic, if, again, as we recognize that the team's going back over these next few days to kind of come up with plans, I do think it's important for us to consider what grant options there may be. There may be positions within, I don't want us to be looking just at our local funds budget, we need to be looking at the grants options and what we, what positions may need to be eliminated on that side so that we can kind of balance out between the two, just, you know, as you're going through this whole process. And I know that there are, you know, very strict guidelines around grant funds, but we have significant grants that do have some flexibility within them that we need to keep in mind as we're trying to really thread the needle. Thank you.
All right, we're all set on that. Next?
Excuse me, Mayor. While we're on priorities of jobs, we already, someone already brought up those three reading teachers. I just thought it was important for my colleagues to, I did a lot of work on this, just give me a second, please. If I don't find it, I'll go out of my mind. Okay. I think one of the priorities, and I hope my colleagues can hear me, was something that's been important for me for quite a while and it might take me only about two and a half minutes, three minutes to read this, but this comes off, we have about 22 speech pathologists and I believe that's how many we got, but this one comes from a person that was hired in 2001 and she told me to use her name if I wanted to, but I probably will try not to use names. She was hired in 2001 at a master's level by Dr. Flanagan. In 2002, Mrs. Mulligan hired this other girl, Renee, at a master's plus 30. Mass General wrote a letter stating how many credits her degree took. Grievance paperwork indicates it was an administrative error. Teachers with a master's is 30 credits, speech pathologist approximately 54 to 60 credits. In 2003, and by the way, when Mrs. Mulligan hired this Renee girl at a master's plus 30, this girl that was at a master's level hired in 2001 was her supervisor and this girl come in making more money than her supervisor. So, getting back to this, in 2003, if speech pathologists asked for a master's degree plus 30, they got it. If not, if they didn't ask for it, they didn't get it. 2006, many SLPs begin to notice others were making more money than them. Many wrote letters requesting change in pay. Ms. Mulligan said yes to many and as Mr. Cassidy took over, he stated no to many, including this girl that was hired in 2001. In 2015, they all filed a grievance. The subject was dropped and we were told we couldn't talk about it anymore. In 2018, Anne Sheehy granted master's plus 30 to new SLPs at the day school, to one SLP at the day school. SLPs called the union and this was taken away from this lady and she was told she had to pay it back. A new grievance was opened. Universities are now writing school departments letters requesting they be hired at a master's 30. Many departments are honoring this. New SLPs are learning, are leaning, are leaving Lowell because they can get this, they can get this at the other districts. Lowell has a high turnover with SLPs and new SLP, a new one recently at the Butler, just recently quit and will not be returning. We only have 22 of these people, but I know for sure, I've been following them, they have big caseloads and I believe this is something that needs to be fixed and I hope my colleagues hear me. Thank you very much. And, oh, one last thing. Thank you, Ms. Dari. When we're saving or looking to put some money in where we're going to spend it, my opinion is the reading teachers, the SLPs should be fixed, there's not that many because we're going to be sued by it, I believe. And that circuit breaker that you mentioned, thank you very much, I believe the special ed lady ain't here tonight, but I believe whatever we could throw into that circuit breaker thing, any money at all, that would be a big priority of mine, too. And thank you, Mayor, for your time. Thank you.
All right, we're all set on that. Next is the STEM Academy, Rogers School, time change. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is for the committee's vote to change the time at the STEM Academy for the staggered schedules that we've been discussing.
I need a motion to approve by Mr. Nada, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dari?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, a motion to approve the donation to, we have to, we have, need a vote to accept a donation to day school regarding the Family and Resource Center from the Daily Group totaling $32,000. Need a motion to approve the donation of the day school and the Family Resource Center. All right, Mr. Hoy, seconded by Mr. Nada, Mr. Dakota, thank you. We now have, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Can we have a question first?
Oh, sorry.
I was just curious about the numbers on this one, so it's looking like it's a $2,000 donation for two different locations?
It's a total, worth a total of. It's two defibrillators, which all of our schools are required to have under Mass General law as of July 1st, 2018, for the Family Resource Center and the day school, that totals 2,000. And then an additional 30,000 for the listed items that were part of the day school building that I'm happy to inform everyone that was 100% certified by the state today. So, our children will be in school and on time. So, that's just an additional 30,000 and the list is all, all there for you.
Ms. Dari?
Thank you, I just would like to say, I desperately needed some good news tonight, so thank you for that. And while we're talking about the Family Resource Center, could I ask a question in terms of... terms of when the notifications are going to go out to families of where their children are going to be placed, you know, for the kindergarten and all that?
I can get, I can get the specific date for you. I know that, that they should have already had their notifications, but it might be, it might be buses that you're referring to at this point? Because I know that we're dealing with, you know, questions relative to placement right now.
Well, I had a parent ask me today and that's, I was surprised to hear they had.
So it might have been a parent that just recently came in because we did, we did send out the pre-K, the K notices early on, but it might be someone who just came in to register. So if you want to give me the person's specific name, I'd be happy to look into it for you.
Or if you just want to give us the update of when the notices went out and when the bus information will go out?
Sure.
Because it is, school's opening in a few weeks.
Yes, and so the, I know that Mr. Dakota and Ms. McCary have been working tirelessly this week trying to get all the bus routes together. And they'll be pulling a team together either Friday or Monday at the very, I think it's Friday of this week, to get all of those envelopes stuffed with bus passes and get them out to our families. So I'm thinking that it might be just an individual case at this point, so I'd be happy to look into it for you.
Mr. Hoey?
Mayor, do you know if we have one of those defibrillators in this building? Do we?
I believe we do.
All right, good. Do you know where it is? In case we need it, buddy?
I haven't.
Because that's a great machine. It's a great machine.
I have it by my desk.
He's just concerned about you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to wrap that up, if we could, request that the administration send a thank you note to the Daily Group for that very generous donation, expressing the committee's appreciation and the district's. Thank you.
I think within the first week, we put it up to high school, it saved a person's life. So they are valuable. We have four, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Starry?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We have to be thankful for the clerk. All right, we have now to vote to approve four conference requests. Need a motion for approval? Seconded by Mr. Dakota and seconded by Ms. Nada. Thank you. Next, roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Starry?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Under communication, invitation to Lowell Day School grand opening. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. This is a memo and an invitation from the Daily Group regarding a ribbon-cutting ceremony scheduled for Monday, August 27th, 2018. And they would like to invite everyone, all of our committee members and the mayor to attend, as well as our teaching staff who will be joining us. So they also stated to me that they're willing to change the scale of, schedule if it doesn't work for people, but I put that out for you as a formal invitation.
I need a motion to accept and place and file. By Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Nada. Okay. Right now, we're in a plan to go into executive session, so I need a motion to recess and to enter to executive session for the purpose of reviewing the communications from the superintendent, Kalafawi's attorney, and the proposed notice of contract termination, which involves strategy regarding contract negotiations with non-union personnel, litigation strategy, public discussion of which may dramatically affect the school committee's position and to adjourn from it, and we plan to adjourn from executive session. I need a motion to accept by Mr. Nada, seconded by Ms. Starry. Thank you. We will adjourn, we will adjourn from that meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Starry?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.